I went when she was there last time. He might have been there and I didn't go to his. I think I had him before I realized what was going on.
Because he could.
Wait, on Facebook or what?
But anyway, yeah. I just went, I saw him for thirty bucks and they're a hundred and sixty-five dollars.
This one should do great.
She did various kinds of things.
Lace is definitely.
I think.
Okay, mine's on it.
When you have guests for sitting in chairs and stuff.
It's on on Facebook.
And how much you sold them for?
Thirty bucks.
I've already met with both these people twice.
All right. Maybe they took my part.
I've already met with both these people twice.
I have him, I've never met him, so.
I like saying. I get along with him, I like talking.
Our ratings aren't so good anymore.
You're gonna start.
I am not a hundred percent, and you will find very quickly. All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. We'll start out with a roll call, please.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, here. Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Hagerman?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we'll start this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. You could rise if you're able.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, hold on to a silence. Thank you. Welcome back. It feels like I haven't seen you folks for years and years. It's good to get the old man back together again. Hopefully, we still know the music. Should we start with an approval of the agenda today?
There's some, yeah, okay, go ahead, Brenda.
Can I make some changes? Please, um, I would like, please. I would like to make an election update under twelve B.
Yep.
And then, I would like to remove the minutes of the Housing Commission meeting on November fifteenth, under seven A B.
Why is that?
Um, they didn't, they didn't sign who did it, and it's not labeled what committee meeting is at the top. So maybe somebody else did the minutes and we just need to make a couple of changes.
All right, so just need some finishing touches.
Yeah, and we can bring it back to the next meeting, we'll be all set.
All right, so we've got two proposed changes. Anything else the crew would like to do? All right, I think I heard a motion in that area of the table, maybe a restated motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion with the changes that were submitted.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion or conversation about the agenda? All right, hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've got an agenda. How about disclosures of conflicts of interest tonight? Okay. I see none of those. Let's move into public statement one, then. This is limited to three minutes and limited to topics that are on our agenda tonight. There will be a second time for folks to come up with a second amount of three minutes to talk about anything that they would like to share with us. I see a member of the public heading to the lectern.
That would be me. Ray Kotke, Park Lake Road. I just wanted to say how excited I was that Phil and Karen got together with the easement for the county property, and there was a stipulation of a minimum amount that they wanted the township to pay to take deed of this property. And I just wanted to highly recommend that somebody make that motion tonight so that we can secure that five-acre parcel. And I think that would be the linchpin, if you will, to finally start the Park Lake Nature Trail. And I have personally added the term "nature preserve" because as the document that I handed all to you tonight, I've seen anything from seventeen acres all the way up to twenty-six acres, and it's over forty acres that it could potentially be. And it's an opportunity for us to have a contiguous green space, a true green space with mature hardwoods that, other than Robson Park, we don't really have that here in the township property. Rose Lake, yes, not right here in our metropolis. I would recommend that we go with securing that parcel at the earliest convenience.
Listen, for enough money, you can call it whatever you'd like to call it.
There you go.
We can name it the Ray Kotke Preserve. Any other members of the public like to make a statement? All right, I don't see anyone from county, state, federal, or other agencies. Is that true? All right, let's move into the consent agenda, then. We have numerous committee meetings. We've scratched seven A B out to come back to us, but we have, what, six others? Is there a motion to move forward with the consent agenda?
We accept the consent agenda, except for the.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, because it's a consent agenda, we don't have any discussion. We'll take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, group. That brings us to the approval of the minutes. We've got two sets of minutes, a special meeting on December twenty-seventh and a regular meeting on January second. We could take those separately or together, I think, unless the clerk disagrees.
I'm fine with together. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting for December twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-three and of the regular meeting on January second of twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Great. I did have a typographical error.
Okay.
That I don't think is necessary to change how we vote. Any other discussion about meeting minutes? All right, we will take a voice vote, then. And the motion was for both of them, is that right?
Correct.
Great. All those in favor of approving both sets of minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, our minutes are approved. That brings us to the vouchers. We've got lots of vouchers. Two sets, and we need to take those separately, if we will.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers for the twenty twenty-three.
Support.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the vouchers for fiscal year twenty twenty-three? All right.
Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
That takes care of A, which brings us to B, fiscal year twenty-four vouchers.
Make a motion to approve the vouchers for twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion about our fiscal year twenty-four vouchers? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote as well.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
That brings us to a treasures report. It is our quarterly investment story summary.
That's it.
Do you have anything you want to add to that?
Um, I did go in and make some changes because our accountant said we just are supposed to submit to you the investments. Before, I was submitting all the checking accounts and everything, and those aren't investments. So, we've changed it up a little, per the accountant.
So just, there was more information?
It used to be more information, and I can change it back, but the accountants, you know, recommend just the investments because that's really what we're supposed to.
Did I miss this in the packet?
I don't know, it's this right here.
It's out of order.
I think it was, oh, it might have been out of order. Actually, I think it printed after raise. I think it printed after raise. Yeah.
Yes, it did.
Yeah.
Thank you, I didn't.
Yep.
It might have been in your mailbox.
No, it printed.
It's here, it's just after.
Printed separate.
It was printed after raise.
Is that?
No.
That's not it?
It's not in there.
No.
You flip the committee.
Okay, I'll share it, that's fine.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, it's just a.
No, it was just, it was in the packet, it printed in the wrong order, in the packet. It was after raise information.
I think I got tired of seeing raise information and just kept moving quick.
Could be. So if anybody doesn't have any questions? So basically, these are the CDs and the money markets we have.
How are you feeling about them?
Good, and actually, I just opened another CD for the sewer fund, so it will change in the next quarter.
If I may, I will let you know that the treasurer far exceeded her estimate of what she thought she would earn in interest. Was approximately, I want to say twenty-five or thirty-five thousand, and she came in at, in like the fifties or sixties. So she's doing rather well with investments.
Can you do that again?
If the rates stay good. It depends on what the rates change.
Just keep doing it. All right, any questions for the treasurer on our quarterly investment report? All right, we'll keep up the good work.
Thanks.
You keep bringing that money in, we'll keep spending it.
Trust me, I know.
That brings us to item eleven, committee appointments. I have put forth for you a recommendation for Ray Kotke to the Park Lake Advisory Board with a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. What I like about this appointment is Ray is currently serving as the president of the Friends of Park Lake, and I think that is a good connection between the two committees, to have them connected in a formal way, which led me to recommend his appointment today. And I told Ray if he wanted to say hello, he would have a very limited amount of time to do so. Right now. We won't set the clock unless you give us a reason to set the clock.
No, 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 no. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be considered for appointment, there. And I just want to say that for, since its inception, the advisory board has had a line item on their monthly agenda for Friends of Park Lake report. And so, we've worked, you know, in lockstep all this time, and with the, hopefully with the securment of the easement of the county parcel, that will give us the catharsis to finally start the Park Lake Trail. And you may or may not know, but the Park Lake Advisory Board in the past has also had an ad hoc committee with three PhDs on it, myself, not myself, I'm not a PhD, myself was on it, and also one of the private residents, Patrick O'Boyle, was also on it. So we're very qualified and enthused and ready to commence this opportunity for the township, to get it started. And also, you know, of course, with, with, work with the rec group as well. So, anyway, thank you for the opportunity to be considered. Thanks.
Thanks, Ray. Any questions for Ray? I thought it would be nice if folks that we're appointing are here at the meeting, and we can ask questions if we need to. It's easy when it's one person at a time. When it's much more than that, we'll revisit the issue. Oh, go ahead.
I was at that meeting, and what a great group.
Oh, you were?
Yeah.
I couldn't remember.
Yeah, it was me.
It was so long ago.
I know, but what a great group, knowledge and information on water quality, water, just, I was really blown away. It's great.
We brought forth that ad hoc committee through the insistence of the former, not accountant, superintendent, Dan Watichia. I got those two terms mixed up when I thought of him.
Can you go?
Because he wanted more.
Can you go back up to the paper?
People at home can't hear you.
Anyway, the ad hoc committee came to fruition because Dan Watichia, the former superintendent, wanted some more cohesive conceptual processes, phases, if you will, is what he called them. And so we formed that group to determine that, and we have all that historical data also going forth to help us, you know, with this. And I don't mind saying, I have quite a convincing plan as well. Karen and I have, and I have talked about it over the past few years, about, you know, what it could cost and what we could get it done for. I think, you know, we've waited over ten years now. I think with our DPW and park workers, we could judiciously work toward cutting the cost down instead of the enormous amount that was quoted before. And soon, if I could, I do have a presentation I'd like to give to you about that, in that respect, once the group decides that they want to go forward. And I would applaud a motion by someone to say, I would like to officially adopt the Park Lake Nature Non-Moralized Trail to begin in earnest. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. This is my recommendation for you tonight for committee appointments. I would entertain a motion if anyone so agreed with that recommendation.
I saw who that Ray Kotke be put on.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome to the plab. We've got big waiters to fill. That brings, that brings us to township committee reports. We now have two. The first is broadband access from trustee Hagerman.
All right, so in your packet, I included slides from a presentation that I, it was online. I attended virtually almost two weeks ago now. After initially kind of stumbling across this in email, one of the township update emails that we get, the overview is that as part of the bipartisan infrastructure, the federal bipartisan infrastructure program, a significant chunk of money was set aside nationally to provide broadband access primarily to rural areas with the goal being of getting one hundred percent of the residences and businesses in the country connected to reliable high-speed internet. They divided up the money and allotted it on a state-by-state basis. And Michigan actually got a fair amount of money because we have a lot of rural areas that don't have good internet service currently. So, the state of Michigan created this program to implement this process. It's called the Michigan Moonshot, and it's being facilitated by the Merit Network. So, in your packet, they just give you a couple of introductions of who Merit is. They've been around for decades, running internet. They're sort of a consortium of universities and some other entities that provide and study and coordinate internet access. But what's, I think, most interesting is if you flip to the page that has the map of Michigan, this is kind of their starting point. So this map of Michigan, it has some circles on it, and some parts of the circle are green, and that represents people in the area who have reliable access to high-speed internet. So they're considered served, they're considered good. There's yellow, which means they have internet, but it doesn't meet the requirements set out by this group to be, there we go, thank you, to be considered fully served. So fully served is one hundred up upload and twenty, or one hundred down and twenty up. It also has to be a physical wired connection, so it couldn't be something like Starlink or HughesNet, for example. And then the red portions of those circles are counting the people who are considered unserved, meaning they currently do not have a provider that offers reliable internet service in this, their area. This is a map of what is offered to people. It isn't necessarily what people have elected to take, but this is what's available to people to purchase like a utility in their area. So this map shows what we currently have. This is according to, if you notice the little asterisks down at the bottom, this is according to internet service providers. So this is what WOW says they're providing, or Frontier, or Verizon, or whomever provides it. This is what they say they're providing, and what Merit is attempting to do is they're attempting to verify that, so to speak. They're saying, we don't want to rely just on what the companies say they're providing. We want to know what are people actually getting. So they've started this process called the challenge, where residents and municipalities are able to challenge the map if they believe that it's wrong or inaccurate. The map that we just saw is a preliminary map based on FCC data. The Merit Group is currently, like, right now, in the process of finalizing a more accurate version of the map. From what it sounded like, it will be released maybe within the next week or so, is what I'm expecting just based on the kind of feeling of the people who are running the meeting. It sounded like it was imminent. Once that map is released, then that starts this short challenge window of, I think, only about thirty days. So in that thirty days, any person who believes that they are not accurately classified on the local map can challenge. And the way that you do a challenge is you go to this website that's not up and running yet, but it will be as soon as the map comes out, this merit.edu/challenge, and you fill in information, where am I, what kind of provider do I use? And then you authorize Merit basically to test your internet behind the scenes for an extended period of time. It won't affect your internet, it won't slow up down your service, but they will have these little testing windows where they'll pop in and they'll just randomly sample it and see to confirm, are you actually getting the speed, are you actually getting the service that your provider claims you are in fact getting? If not, if it's less than what the requirement is, then you get flagged as underserved in that area. If there are enough people in a contiguous area that are unserved or underserved, then that triggers basically a request for a bid, and some internet provider in our area would take that bid and then come and install internet access to that region. The state of Michigan got one point six billion dollars. Feels like a lot to me. It's a big number to pull this off. And from what it sounds like, these people really believe that they are going to be able to, through this program, get internet to everybody who currently doesn't have good internet. I am included in that, which at the end of this packet, I did a little zooming around on the FCC website, which this is the current, this is the only current map that you can really access. This is kind of the starting point map. And anybody can go to this and put in any address and check the parameters. So this is basically the zoomed-out one with all the kind of honeycomb hexagons. This is our area. I kind of tried to get most of Bath Township in there as best as I could. I just kind of started from my address as the little pin in there. So the dark blue areas are the areas that are considered served. If it's a lighter blue, it's under, underserved. If it's white, it's unserved, and a lot of the white areas are going to be things like the Rose Lake DNR property. There's not going to be internet there, a bunch of golf courses. There's not going to be internet there in those reasons. Yep, that's me, so we, yep, right in the middle. And then what I did is I zoomed in, and so if you zoom in, that's the picture below. That shows you either a red circle or a green dot, and that gives you your classification. And my little pin there is a red circle because I have terrible internet availability at my house. As you can see, all my neighbors do as well. And so if we're red, that means that we're on the list. They recognize already you don't have good internet. There's a large group of people in your area, so I would expect that that would commence installation of internet to our area. But people who have, people who want to take advantage of this or want to take note of this are people who are marked green, but they feel like they're not getting the internet that they believe that they are paying for. I mean, if you watch on the community page, is your internet, how's your internet? It's wow, working, blah, you know, all the time. There are constant complaints about internet not being reliable, not being fast, maybe not being what people are paying for. And so for those people in our community, they're the ones who are going to want to sign up for this challenge to actually challenge the map, and enough, enough people flip their zone from green to yellow, say, then that can trigger an upgrade in the services to their area. It can't just be one, it has to be, they were sort of implying six in a zone. Now, I didn't understand exactly what a zone was. We were talking about census areas, and I wasn't exactly certain how that breaks down. I think there will be more information going forward. But they were asking that townships and public entities who have the ability to do mass communication undertake this spreading the word portion of it once that commences, like, next week, probably.
How will we find out when it actually opens up, Kate, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
There are people working behind the scenes to verify this map, and it sounds like they're really trying to get it verified, but they don't want to put the map out before they're confident in the accuracy of it. So I do believe, I was at the Michigan Townships Capitol Conference in Lansing a couple of weeks ago, and they talked about this a lot, and you are reiterating everything that they said was so important. And they did say it was important for the township as a government, libraries, if you have community areas where people gather, it's important for them to also look and challenge as well in addition to the residents. So I think there will be information coming from Michigan Municipal League, the Michigan Townships Association. They are going to really push people to check and challenge, so I believe we will be alerted. Yeah, and they also included pre-made flyers, pre-made email things that can just be posted on Facebook, sent out via email, put in a newsletter, whatever the case may be. They've already constructed all of those mass media distribution type things and have started sending those out. So I think if we have a way to do that, I think we can just get on board with it. But I'm really excited about it. It seems like a lot of money and maybe a once-in-a-lifetime chance to get internet to those of us who have been excluded from it for whatever reasons over the last couple of decades.
This is great. Go ahead.
Can I ask you a question? So there's something I'm misunderstanding here, because in the packet where it says who can challenge the map, it says not residents.
That's true. They can't challenge, they can't make a change to the map. A resident cannot make a change to the map, but they can go to the website and have a test done. And then if the test comes back confirming that the internet is not meeting the standards, then if enough people in that area have that same situation, then that causes the map to change. But one household would not trigger, all right, internet's coming to your area. Although they can start the process, it has to be multiple houses in the same, or multiple locations in the same area. Now, it does say on there that they can't challenge the map, but Merit has created the challenge that individual residents can do. Townships and municipalities can challenge on behalf of residents as well, or on behalf of areas.
Yeah, a certain area within the township.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, it was kind of part two of it, because it says this one point six billion, and then why does it matter? Because it determines which locations will be eligible and which will not.
Right.
So we're still trying to figure out, I mean, while they, I guess, put it out there as a sweeping, let's fill Michigan with broadband, it really isn't that, correct?
Well, let's fill Michigan where it isn't already filled.
Okay.
So basically, everyone, when this map comes out, that is flagged green, is assumed to be.
Is there, anyway, yeah, okay.
Is assumed to be good.
Okay.
So if you're flagged green, your residence is marked green, and you feel that that's maybe not an accurate mark because your internet service provider is the one who said, nope. because your internet service provider is the one who said, nope, they're green, they're good. We don't want anybody else to come in and offer internet to them. They're green. Then if, if people feel that's not accurate, then they want to sign up for that speed test.
So just so you know, I'm not challenging your presentation.
No, 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 no.
I'm just simply trying to figure out what they have in the, in the packet presentation.
Yeah, I think that that's important. But I think also that there's going to be people who don't understand this process. So I don't know, maybe the library might be able to help with that.
So it was my understanding at the Michigan Townships Association that this release of this information was monumental because this was the first time ISPs had ever indicated where they provide service. So this is huge, according to MTA, that this information has been released and can be challenged because up until now, nobody really knew who was where. So it sounded like a big deal that we even got this opportunity to know where service is at and, and what service.
What pops up when you click on one of those little buttons?
The red circles?
Yeah, or the green.
It's just nothing.
Okay.
Nothing. I just, that, that pin is there because I just typed in my address as a starting point.
Like, it doesn't tell you the ISP that's supposedly servicing?
No, that's not true. If you type in a specific address, then yes, it does tell you.
Okay.
You can also set on there the parameters that Merit is using, the 120, and that it has to be hardwired. Because when I initially looked at my house, it showed green. Well, yes, because I can get Starlink at my house, which is good internet. But once you set the parameters to what the project parameters are, then it flipped it to red and it says, nope, you only have Frontier, you have nothing that meets those parameters. So it does, it does give a list of people who provide ser, who say they are providing service to that address.
And I assume then the chart is like the minimum threshold?
The map?
Yeah.
What do you mean?
Like, you know, we have WOW, and you can buy like three different packages of WOW. But I imagine they're trying to say like, at the very least...
Do you at least have the ability to purchase that as an option from your provider?
Okay, so I typed in the township, and it talks about fixed broadband. And then under mobile broadband, there are several providers listed.
And if you click on the little settings gear up to the, in the black bar, yeah. Then you would want, oh, well, this would be for mobile. If you went to the fixed tab.
So close that? Just pull back up.
I know.
That's like the blind.
And then click on the little settings. Then if you hit all wired and licensed, and then the 100 slash 20.
Right there?
Yep.
Okay.
And then that should show anybody who's providing that service to this area.
Doesn't like it.
Maybe because this is not a residence or business?
Possibly.
Maybe if we put in the library or something like that, that might show up.
Kate, what are the numerical selections though? Why did you choose the one hundred side?
Because that is the minimum threshold to be considered served.
Oh, okay.
If you have anything lower than that, you are considered underserved.
Okay.
Or unserved.
You gathered all this from one meeting?
I did. Read through, there's a, I don't know, about a 150-page document that has been published along with it that I read through at an indoor track meet a few weeks ago.
Is your husband happy with the family time now?
Is this? Clinton County said that they weren't going to do anything in Bath Township. Is this superseding the county? So the county is not in this anymore?
It's, I, I would say it's, it's different and it's much broader than what the county did.
Because we were not in that at that time.
They were, they were applying for a specific pot of money known as a Robin Grant.
Yeah.
And, and this is more of a, a bigger, more broader effort.
So they're both working towards this, or is it just Merit?
Yes, but differently.
And it sounds like in our area, because we have companies that are already set up to put in internet, that in this type of area, once it gets recognized as being needed, they will just put it out for a bid, and they're expecting that companies that are already in place will take that bid and come and do the job. Versus maybe more rural areas, like of Clinton County, for example, where it's not going to be so easy. It's going to be stringing miles of cable and whatnot. That's probably what maybe some of those other grant monies are going to go towards because it's a much, going to be much more involved process because they're not really contiguous, easily contiguous to internet service that's already in place.
They also indicated at MTA that if, if a provider went in front of your driveway or your house, but they said, I'm going to charge you $7,000 to bring it to, up to your house, that you would want to be the person that would challenge that and have the proof that they said it's going to cost us seven grand to bring it into your house because you're not being served. That, that technically just bringing it by your house doesn't mean you're served.
Right. That was something that I noticed when I was looking around on the map. There would be these random red spots within a sea of green. And then once I looked closer, I thought, oh, well, that's everybody who's far back from the main road. They don't have their cable internet going all the way back there. So that would be another example. If there were enough of those in it, well, they should turn up red. But if there are enough low service in an area, then that could get them on internet, maybe on a private road. I don't know.
Well, this is helpful.
Yeah, I thought it was very exciting, encouraging.
When there's more information, if either of you get that, we'd love to hear that and sort of spread the word that now is the time to get in there and check things out.
I definitely appreciate your work. This is a lot to understand and to talk about. And they had the, the office that Michigan set up for this was there speaking. And she said, like, things are changing all the time, every day, like, it's a lot to keep up with. So thank you for your effort.
Anything else on that, Kate?
I don't think so. Just wait till the next step.
Thank you. That brings us to item 12B, which is election committee update.
I just thought maybe you guys wanted to hear what's going on with the elections here in the township office. Everybody's been extremely busy processing applications and ballots. As I told you before, the last week of December, I sent out 3,600 absentee voter ballot applications to the people who are on the permanent list. As of last Friday, we have received 1,500 applications back, okay? We've received about 254 ballots back. Election staff has been making many calls and sending emails to applicants because they're not filling out the application in its entirety. So we, we call them up and give them a chance to, to correct it. We can't make the corrections here in the office. They actually have to fill out other forms. So they can come into the township, or we'll send the forms, or they can email us. Okay. This has caused delays in people receiving their ballots, but as of today, we're up to date on the processing. The second week of January, we sent out early voting postcards, okay? The state told us what they wanted in these cards. Unfortunately, there's no dates to the nine days of early voting. It's just a generic postcard, unfortunately, but this is what the state wanted us to send out. So the nine days of early voting starts the second Saturday before Election Day. So it starts February 17th. And we can go to Dewitt Township or Bingham Township to vote, okay? We have three ways to vote. You can vote in person on Election Day. You can vote by absentee ballot, or you can vote in the early, nine days of early voting. I don't know if there's any other questions.
I was asked tonight, if you don't send that first one back in, are you still going to get the second and the third?
Another application?
No, no. If you, you get, you got your ballot, and you, let's say you, you're unhappy with who's running.
And you decide not to vote.
And you decide not to vote. Are you going to get your next ballot for the primary?
If that's the way you filled out the application, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So there's no early voting here?
No.
Okay.
We went with Clinton County, and Clinton County decided to have two early voting sites, and they chose Dewitt and Bingham.
There is that option, Al, because I am one of the 256 or whatever who submitted their ballot that you can select. I think it's called not committed. Is that what that last option is?
It's ballot without presidential primary.
No, on the actual ballot.
I haven't looked at the ballot.
The last item on the ballot is like uncommitted or not committed to a candidate or something like that.
So you could vote that way, yes.
So if people still wanted to send it back without having actually voted for any of the people?
But if it don't make any difference.
Correct.
If you send it back or not. That's what they were wondering about.
It's up to them if they want, wanted.
Yeah.
They would have the numbers at the state, how many voted uncommitted. So it's really up to them on how they want to do it.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, you can also, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. When you say Dewitt, is it a location within the city or the charter township?
Dewitt Charter Township.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And if there's any questions, you can go to the homepage on our Bath Township website. And I think the whole first homepage is full of election information.
Yeah, so that's the top of the homepage, and if you just scroll down, it's all right there.
So Karen, if you could go back up to the top to where the boxes are. A little farther. It'll say elections and voting, and that will take you to the state website. If you have any questions, there's more information out there also. You can actually request, you can fill out, you can go on there and you can put the information in there, and it's filling out an application. So you can change your address there. There, there's a lot of things you can, you can do. If you don't know, if you're new and you don't know where you vote, you can go on there, put your applica, your address in, and it'll tell you where to vote.
I saw that last week with the two House races, the special House races, and Macomb and Wayne Counties, that turnout was abysmal. What are you expecting for the actual primary here?
It's about, I would say, a third of what a November election is. Like I said, I, I mailed out 3,600 applications, and I've only received, you know, less than half back.
If I may, I'm not trying to take over everybody, but they did talk about that at, the State Bureau of Elections was at MTA. And they did say that one-third, not one-third of your registered voters, but of the people that vote in your township, that you could expect a third to do early voting, a third to do absent, and a third to do in person. That was just the estimate from the state.
During a normal election?
In the upcoming primary. They, they didn't kind of, they didn't indicate which election. They just indicated that that's what you could expect. And I, I assume they were talking about the presidential primary as well.
So you're talking about division of types of voting, not voter turnout?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Interesting.
But that the options would trickle down, basically, what you would see in person or absentee.
Yeah, it still feels real early to be voting on presidential stuff, at least to me. But I did it, and I sent it back. And apparently I filled it out correct because I haven't heard, I haven't heard back yet.
Well, they haven't been open yet.
Just let me have my win.
You signed your envelope, right?
I did, I signed my envelope.
So you've verified that, that signature already.
Thank you. So if you've got one of those applications out, get those turned in. If you got the ballot, get that turned in as well, or there's multiple other ways for you to go about voting. Thanks for leading that up. It's nice to have a smaller election before the big one with all these changes.
It is, yes.
All right, that brings us to our first item of unfinished business, 13A, Park Lake Property Transfer. There's a memo in our packet, but Superintendent Hildebrand, you want to walk us through?
I would, thank you. So attached to the memo is a draft quitclaim deed to transfer the property that's at the end of Webster Road that currently belongs to the Drain Commission to transfer that property to Bath Charter Township. And the deed does reserve an easement for Park Lake leveling purposes. So that would be a permanent easement that the Drain Commission would hold in case they needed to do any work on the water control structure or to raise the lake or lower the lake. Mr. Hanses, Commissioner Hanses indicated that they had originally acquired the property for approximately $30,000. When he met with the county administrator to discuss this specific issue, they indicated that the township in no way should consider paying $30,000 for the property to be transferred. He suggested at the very minimum that the township covered the illegal expenses and engineering work, which was approximately 17, almost $1,800, and that any price paid would be deposited into the Park Lake Level account and become available to be used to maintain the lake level control structure and the constructed berms and to reimburse for the above noted expenses. So I will, based on what this board determines, work with the Drain Commissioner on a, what I would term, settlement, come to an agreement, and then that would have to then go to the Clinton County Board of Commissioners for the final resolution to authorize the sale of the property. So I'm looking tonight to what you would like to do in terms of a payment that I can take back and then negotiate with Commissioner Hanses.
Do you have a recommendation?
So I would at least, I would agree with Commissioner Hanses that the legal fees, engineering fees would be fair. In addition, it's up to this board, but I would recommend no, no more than $10,000 if, if you're looking to pay an amount, but that is up to you. I, I definitely recommend paying the legal and engineering expenses. Just knowing that the money would go into the account to maintain the, we're going to benefit from any money that we pay for this property, so.
Is there a world in which we offer too low an amount and they back away from the deal?
I, I didn't get that feeling from the communication from, from Phil. It was more that they retain the easements was the most important part to him and that they get their expenses covered. So I don't, no, I don't think that there's a, a too, too low of an offer.
I wish all of our deals were like that. Well, fellow board members, do you have thoughts on guidance we should give the superintendent in this Sudo negotiation?
What triggered this? I don't, I don't know any more history on it than just this and maybe what Ray has shared, but...
You've been on the board for like three months.
And you don't know?
I don't know.
So if I may, we, there was some disagreement last summer. Time escapes me now, but I, I'll, I'll say last summer, spring or summer.
Spring.
Uh, thank you, about the end of Webster Road and that there being a private drive in that area. So we brought together residents that were concerned, along with the members of the Drain Commission. Commissioner Hanses was here, their legal counsel was here, the road commission was here. And we had some discussion about that property at the end that they own. And currently have it up on my laptop, but I'm not showing it to you. And we had done a survey as well. So this, if I was on fetch, it would be a little cleaner for you to see. But right here in this green area is, there's a hole... But right here in this green area is, um, there's a whole, this whole thing is, um, Drain Commissioner, Drain Commission property, excuse me. And then we had hoped to, one of the, one of the disputes was, is that people were coming down and coming in front of, of Mr. Terramy's house and accessing the trail that way. I think the Drain Commission property allowed us to kind of come through here, pass just south of the water control structure, and then enter the trail that way. So I think it was, uh, an idea by the Drain Commission to offer us that option um, as a way of eliminating traffic, foot traffic, bicycle traffic, ATB traffic, whatever that traffic might be, from Mr. Terramy's property.
It helps us get to more of a win-win for the property owners down there and those who are supportive of the trail, because other compromises were not supported by all parties.
I think the original plat map, if I'm not mistaken, was off by thirty feet or so. So when they had the center of the road on the original plat, because they didn't have satellite, and this is true in many areas of the township, it's off by thirty feet. My road's off thirty feet. So if I don't really, they're supposed to, they're supposed to own thirty feet to the center where it's platted. But this was not correct. So that was part of the confusion to me when it first started.
I think it was.
As it was moved over, so the actual dam-like structure, to me, became a little bit questionable if it became all private or not. Which was a bit of an issue in my brain, is if I own the whole bloody dam, I could get rid of it if I wanted to. And some of this is to, I think, obviate it becoming private. Am I wrong on that, or is that a little bit right?
You gotta go north, Karen.
You gotta go north.
May I say something about this?
It's right, right here.
Uh, it's not really the time, so let me hold you on that.
No, that's Park Lake, come on Webster.
Oh, up, north.
Oh. You gotta go. What am I doing? I don't know, you gotta go north. You gotta keep going north. I thought I had it.
Keep going to the right.
Keep going to the right.
You're way too far south.
Oh. What am I doing? Up.
We're not sure.
Blindly in the light.
Find the lake, Karen.
Find the lake. I think I have to zoom out.
I have to roll that thing constantly.
Keep going. You gotta keep going. Keep going up. Keep going up? No, not, oh, oh! Try the lake, no.
I do that on their map like every time I use it, and it's so, so maddening.
If you don't have a mouse over there.
So it's somewhere in that square there.
I'm so sorry. It's the worst thing I need to do.
Karen, that's one thing you've heard about fetch, is you can only use the plus and minus in the upper left-hand corner.
Yeah, I'm, I'm feeling that right now. There's a lake, Webster. Nope, don't. Don't, don't move down. There you go.
There. Nope. Across the street.
Let me, one more down. It has this shape, right? I know, just a minute, it's right here. That's in your packet, it's a deed. I'm so sorry. Thank you for explaining this.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I got a question, Karen.
Okay.
They're, they're saying one thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. I take it that means the legal fees and the engineering?
Correct.
So that's what they basically want to cover.
That's, to my knowledge, that's the minimum they ask, yes.
So if we offer them that much money, they should be happy?
Uh, I think that could be correct, yes.
Do you anticipate there would be more expenses still to come?
There may be, um, yeah, I, I ask for help. I have no trouble asking for help with directions. I think it would be a, a fair offer. Um, thank you. Um, I, I, I missed the rest of the question.
Could there be more expenses?
I think so.
In engineering and legal fees?
Possibly in finalizing whatever we, agreement we've come to. I mean, there could be another thousand dollars.
So we probably shouldn't pick that exact number, knowing that there could be more?
If you said legal expenses and engineering fees, I think that that would.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed. Thank you, I appreciate your help. Thanks to the planner for helping me. So yes, I, I do think there could be more as we finalize the paperwork and file the deed. There could be some more expenses.
Go ahead, Karen. Yeah, I got a couple of questions about this. Can you pull up the Spicer one again?
I can. That I can do very easily.
Awesome. So there's a s, the solid, the gray line is kind of offset to the left a little bit, and then there's a line on the outside of that.
So down?
No, you're right, right where you're, uh, anywhere there, just.
Okay.
You have a dash line, you have the gray line, you have a dash line. So this whole easement area, is that this entire portion you're looking at here? So you're looking at the area of the easement right here, but it doesn't go over from the solid line to where? How far does it go over is what I'm trying to say. Because you start with the solid line on the right as part of the easement, and then it moves to the gray line, then it moves to the dashed line, then to the farther dashed line, it says north and south quarter line. So I don't know how far the easement really goes over. Oh, go ahead, Al. Anybody else understand this?
They said that there was eight foot from the water line to the easement line. The rest of that lot is underwater. If I am right. Mr. Bhadki.
Excuse me?
Bhadki.
Bhadki, yeah, you were.
Bhadki. Uh, isn't that right? There was eight foot from the water to the, just enough for a path.
May I point to the map?
Oh, go ahead.
I think you're speaking of, of this right here. Now, is that what you're talking about?
No, the, uh, from, to the right.
Over here?
Yeah, there's more than eight foot between the water and that side, and the driveway.
This, this line, this, first of all, this line right here is the property line between Terramy and, and this parcel in question for the, this area here, in fact, this right here, all of that is underwater.
Right.
That entire thing is underwater. This right here, this, uh, I mean, that's a hundred-foot easement right there. That's the actual berm that would be, in my opinion, the easement that the, first of all, that the non-moorage trail is on the top of, it was built specifically for that. And that is the berm that keeps the lake at its level. So in my opinion, this lot, this line right here, narrowing right to there, that's the easement that the, um, county Drain Commissioner would be interested in, of course, the water control structure, of course. And I, incidentally, I also have another Spicer survey, legal survey, that's right behind that picture right there, that shows the lot line between the private landowner and this property in question that's going to be hopefully, uh, transmitted to Bath Township. This property line literally goes down the exact center of that legacy land bridge. And it's also, Bath owns all of this land over here, and there's a former road. This is the old, the old road, um, from the early, early, early nineteen fifty-eight survey. And Karen had that done with E, E N G. Um, right where that terminates, right there, there's a, there's a property marker right there, there's a stake right there, right now, with a flag on. From there, all the way back here through all of Bath Charter Township's land, that was supposedly called Park Key Drive. And that was in nineteen fifty-six was, was platted. And that's where the township's land will be, is, is, uh, right along that, that parcel there. And in the, in the, uh, the document that I gave you, it explains it a little bit. I call it the fish shaped, um, area that's right here in Bath, Bath Township, uh, property. Right there, I call that the fish right there. And that point right there is actually supposed to be right in the center of that right there. And that's the center of the, of the road that was Park Key Drive. That goes right from there, all the way around here. And this was also a, a parcel at one time that was platted, just as these were. There were three parcels there, one there, two there, or three, and they went all the way around this canal, all the way over here. And that was going to be what was called Oak Island Subdivision. I haven't found an exact map of that plat, but it's in all of the, all of the registered deeds for all of these properties, mentions that Park Key Drive going along the southern terminus of all of these properties. And so that was one of the reasons that I argued that if we ever abandoned that road and made it private, it would obviate us from going anywhere in there with any kind of unauthorized property. But right here, to change, to go back, this is the easement for the dyke that the, uh, Drain Commissioner wants to retain, or he will retain.
And the rest of that is? Oh, so the rest of that is underwater? Doesn't look like it's underwater?
This dark green, this dark green is all underwater.
That is water, okay.
And that was by design. It was, it was designed specifically for the purposes of, um, increasing the lake's, uh, wetland by ten acres with, with the other side.
On that Spicer chart, so if you add the thirty-three, the forty-eight, and the twenty, that equals a hundred-one. Is that what they're saying is the hundred feet? Are they rounding it down?
Yeah, it's a hundred.
Yeah.
I don't think so, but.
So I think that's what they're saying, Jack, is like from that line into the water, sort of?
Okay.
Over the berm and then to the water and.
Thank you.
Around where Grandma lives. However, the nursery rhyme goes.
I have a, a couple more questions.
Go ahead.
Proceed. And forgive me, sir, I can't remember your name as corporate counsel.
Uh, David Schenck.
Dave? Yeah, okay. Um, so this easement agreement is a combination. I mean, there's like, from my understanding, there's like three different types of easements you can have in the state of Michigan. But this is an agreement between the county and us. But what I'm concerned, or what I want an answer to, if you have it, is since they're gonna, we're each gonna maintain a portion of control over it, what, what in terms of liability for this easement that we're assuming we're gonna try and ask the public to be able to go on and walk down? Do we share equal amounts of liability in this, number one? And number two, what do you think the standard of care will be for maintaining this? If the township actually goes forward to this? Because I mean, those are two very crucial questions to me, because it's not an easy, not just this part of the area, but any of the area down there is not gonna be an easy walking area per se.
Right.
Without some other additions down there. Do you have any sense of that at all? I know it's a complicated question, but.
I do, um, but I do also wanna point out that we represent the Clinton County Drain Commissioner.
Ah.
It's on the, it's on the thing, in case she didn't see that.
Yes, I circled it and said, on behalf of.
Is there a way to turn these down, so I don't keep getting through there all the time?
Yeah, so for purposes of this, I think there'd be a bit of a conflict. I guess analyzing the specific risks that, uh, could be, uh, could result as disagreement, just because of our representation on the other side.
I, I get it, thank you.
So we would never wanna enter into an agreement like this without someone from legal looking it over. So would we need to go to a separate firm, or is there a firewall between some of these divisions we could engage in?
Yeah, I, I actually was trying to give the answer to that, because when I was looking through this thing, I saw that the order was prepared by Amanda at our office. I wasn't sure exactly, and I guess how the conflict would work. Um, so I can circle back with that answer to determine, I guess, to be explicit, that would be a conflict of us revealing this, uh, and then, uh, kind of propose how you guys would go about moving forward.
Like a head-to-head match between you and Amanda? That, that's what we're looking for. Go ahead, Sheri.
Some locals have said that there's a lot of cars parked there drinking, uh, roadie behavior and, because it's kind of isolated, and then they kind of mosey on to the private property, which I understand is the negative.
I graduated in seventy-two, and I was one of the cars that was back there.
Oh, okay.
That was way before there was anybody living.
Right. I guess it still goes on, but anyway, that would be a liability issue perhaps for us.
The police and the fire don't, don't like the idea of having a trail back there.
That's kind of what I've understood, that it's so isolated.
But you can't get emergency vehicles back there, currently.
Right. It's just something to think about, their liability purposes, how are we liable? I don't know.
In the first phase of the trail development, there was a piece of property that we owned that was supposed to be a parking lot to help people park where they should be, and so that cars aren't even going down this, because cars shouldn't be driving over, uh, the berm in that area and into the private property. So theoretically, if, as had, has been presented to this, this board, not us, but in previous boards, there's a property just up there that we have sort of cordoned off to be a parking lot. That doesn't solve all of what you were saying, Sheri, but I think it would move at least the cars to a place where they're supposed to be. That doesn't solve the ability to get back or any of those issues. But, but there is a plan for where we put vehicles, so they're not in the way.
Kind of like to get some of these questions answered in terms of,
The parking lot is owned by the county, is that right?
Right.
No.
Has the easement to it.
That piece?
That, this isn't part of this.
No.
No, that's, that's the parking lot.
That's the parking lot by itself.
Clinton County, though.
That's ours, no, that's the, that's the Bath Township's parking lot.
Why did he tell us then that he, uh, would not let cars park in there?
Excuse me?
Why did he tell us in the meeting?
He?
Phil?
Phil.
Oh, and that's, no, he didn't say that.
Yes, he did.
He did?
Yes, he did.
Well, he doesn't own it, and he has no retention to it. Um, so he would, he would.
But the gate is up there, and it was asked about the gate, and he said the gate is staying.
No, well, the gate, he's talking about the gate lower.
No, he's talking about the gate. You guys, they asked exactly the question. Was getting into the parking lot, there's a gate.
Right, and that was what a, by Bath Township, that gate was, to keep people out.
We put that up?
Yes. And in fact, correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, but I think, um, Ben has the keys for those gates, is that correct?
I don't know who has the keys for those gates.
Really?
I don't. I don't control the keys in the township. He may. That, that may be an accurate statement, but I can't, I can't confirm that.
But like someone at the township has the keys?
Somebody has the keys, correct, I just.
One thing I wanted to mention, you were talking about liability. This, this berm that you can safely see here, that was the structure that was built for the purposes of controlling the water level of the lake. By law, there's, there's a circuit court law on file that states that the Clinton County Drain Commissioner retain and must maintain that at all times for perpetuity.
But I think the liability, if I understood what your question was, Jack, was about like people walking back there. Do we take on liability of people walking on the berm, walking on the trail? Is that?
Correct, that's exactly.
That would be the same as in any park of Bath Township.
Right, right. But more parks would mean more liability theoretically.
That, that's, that's probably true. I think, um, there is some distinction just by geographic design, though, um, that may increase the liability and the invitation into that area. I mean, some of the parks that you go to here are, are pretty well, I mean, I don't know, Robson would probably be the most.
Rural?
Rural, yeah. I, I don't, I'm searching for the word, but, um.
Rustic.
So I, I think there's some particular challenges in here that I just would like to have some answers to before we, before I'm feeling comfortable moving forward anyway.
Yeah, I think part of my frustration, and I've shared this with Ray, I've shared this with Karen, the board, in all of its formats over the last, you know, fifteen years, ha, has been unwilling to say as an entity, we're gonna build a trail, or we're not interested in building a trail. So we've, we've sort of, for lack of a better term, half-assed it and told people, well, we'll let you build the parking lot, and we'll let you do this, and so like color around the edges. And I think, here's where I think people like Ray get frustrated, like, are we doing it, or are we not doing it? That's the type of stuff that I think we should look at as a, as a whole. What is? What is the liability, what, what is all the things, and then decide, once and for all, are we interested in doing this or not? If we're not, I think we should be more clear with the public, we're not gonna do this, or at least this group of us is not gonna do this. And if we are, then I think we probably would need to take some more specific actions to make sure we do reduce liability. We would have to run staff back there to make sure, you know, whatever. The, the ground is clear, there's no things you could trip, like, we'd have to invest in that. But I think that's the part where we keep like dabbling, like, well, we'll give you a parking lot, but we're not gonna call it a trail. I think at some point, some version of us is gonna need to say, it's a go, or it's not a go.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I think, you know, there's some expectation, I hear all the time of, well, you know, our maintenance people can take care of this. You know, the maintenance is pretty busy as it is. So I think there's gonna be an expectation that maybe that's gonna take additional equipment, additional personnel, a lot of things, and I'm, I'm still, as was brought up, you know, police and fire access is gonna be, without some sort of, I don't know, maybe like a gator or something like that to get back in there. I mean, there's a lot of considerations that haven't been addressed before we can even, I believe, get to making that decision. So I just would like a couple of questions answered before we move forward with that. I think that, in a way, we've already sort of put it out there as an invitation to come and see what we're doing. We have a pretty, um, grand idea of this trail that's gonna go around the lake, and it could be very beautiful and attractive to people to go to. But I think we're missing some of the steps that we need to accomplish before we get there, to, at least for me to feel comfortable, again. That's, after the election, it could be a whole group of people that say, you know, move forward, full speed ahead, damn the torpedoes. But, you know, I, I definitely would like to, to give some consideration, some other things.
There is a PowerPoint presentation that Spicer did for us back in like, twenty fifteen or something, that was the original proposal for the trail, and it was spectacular. It was also two and a half million dollars.
Exactly, exactly.
But I think it might be worth this group at least seeing, that was sort of like the first time the board took an effort into saying, do we wanna do something, what could it look like? And then the price tag came back, and our finances didn't look like they look like now, and it was sticker shock. And I think since then, the community who cares about this has been trying to piecemeal something together. But that could at least be a starting point, so we all know where this conversation started from, at least at the board level.
Ryan, I, I have that presentation in its entirety, the original, and I've also revised it to show what we could do in regards to really chopping it in, in a third, uh, by two-thirds, the cost, um, and then some. That was originally made for the purposes of dealing with a DNR, I mean, a MDOT tap drain, which required the boardwalk, which was the most expensive part, to be sixteen feet wide.
Right, for ADA compliance.
And it was two and, two point one million dollars just to do the elevated boardwalk, because it was sixteen feet wide. And I told them, I said, we don't wanna lay an airplane behind it, we just wanna walk down. So I have, that was one of my asks initially about doing the presentation, I have that, that revised presentation that's much more palatable, and it answers a lot of questions. And I might add that, once I'm, um, in with the Park Lake Advisory Board, the advisory board has been on, on this project since its inception, for a decade now, and everybody's willing to get going forward. So if, if you could compile the questions that concern you, I, I'm positive that Dan and everybody else, myself included, would be happy to get answers.
Yeah, I think that's a helpful way to move the work through our processes, to start with the Park Lake Advisory. Obviously, it's not starting there, they've been working on it, but now the US, you're also sitting there. I think it's best as a board, if we're responding to the recommendations by the committee. Do they want this to move forward, or are their, their ideas, which I imagine many might mesh with what you've been talking about? But I think that helps us understand, is, is there a ground swell in the community that's interested in this, or is there a small group of people? That, I think that helps us understand where to invest our time and money.
Well, I think your non-mortarized planning, you just paid fifteen thousand dollars, or it exacerbates what the ground swell is, if you will.
Yeah.
That's, that's what you're paid for, is to find out what the public wanted.
Yeah, mm-hmm, I don't disagree with that. Jack, in terms of this particular issue, would you like to answer the questions about the trail writ large before we agree to take on this property? Or are you willing to talk about this property separate from the trail issue? Because in some ways, they're intended to be together, but aren't actually together, should we decide we don't wanna trail?
Well, talking about moving forward with paying the county, so that, you know, we can take possession of it, I think is the cart before the horse, personally.
My only, yes, my only concern with, I don't disagree with you. I feel like we've led the drain commissioner down a road, and for us to then say, no, thank you, and we're not gonna pay those fees, by the way, you know, we might have some of our houses flooded.
Yeah, yeah, no.
That doesn't mean we should move, I just wanna put that out there, we've sort of led Phil down the road here, and I think very generously, he has offered this option for very cheap, but I, I hear what you're saying.
I couldn't agree with you more. It might be important to have Phil at a follow-up meeting, uh, just to get a sense. I think he has been very gracious and offered us a pretty good deal on this. I just have some concerns about some things that, um, I'm not a fan of just acquiring something because it's on sale. Because I got closets full of stuff that were on sale today. You know, um, that's just my feeling, I hate to be the stumbling block in this, but I, I do have some concerns about it.
I did invite Phil to this meeting, and he said, no, no.
Yeah, I think part of Phil trying to give us his property is so that he doesn't have to deal with this, frankly. And I don't mean that in a derogatory way, I think he's like, this is a Bath Township fight, I don't want any part of it, let me fix the lake level, that's my job.
Yeah, I think so too, and there's, that, and we're gonna keep going here, but that also, uh, if those of you have been around for a while, and Ray, I think you may remember this, there is a time when the lake level got exceptionally low, and there was a lot of concern from the residents around there, and there was a lot of pushback on how this is being controlled at the quote-unquote dike of the water control facility that I'll say, um, which caused some, you know, stuff to be done to upgrade it. So then it turns into, yeah, they're gonna be responsible for that, I guess. But that's gonna be a really good question, if we, that they'll maintain the responsibility for that. I don't know, I just have several questions that, because I, I'll just leave it at that.
Let's, hold on a second there, Ray, let's check in with the rest of the board. How are you all feeling about the situation? Jack's proposed, not exactly a way forward, but some questions to ask before we move forward. I think what Karen was looking for tonight was, it's gonna be this amount. Go ahead, Al.
I was at the meetings, been at most of them, and, um, I think we should get that parcel, whether we put a walk on it or not, to get, they're still gonna have their easement. And they're still gonna, according to Phil, if something goes wrong, they're gonna have to maintain it. It won't be no expense to Bath Township. The only thing he mentioned was he does not want people walking on the dike, uh, by the dam. He says that, that edge is so fragile from the water, that, uh, uh, you gotta keep people away from the edge of the water.
Couldn't they put a little fence around it to keep people off of that, and be easy to do, it seems like? And I looked at it, and we just have to keep people off of it, like you said. But I think we should buy, I agree with you.
But I think we should buy it.
I think we should buy it, too.
Does changing ownership of this property change anything in terms of, if somebody were to go back there and get injured? I assume if they call nine-one-one, Bath Township's gonna go there either way, whether the county has the right to it, or whether the township has the right to it, I don't know that whose name is on the ownership of it changes much in that aspect for the time being.
I mean, I'm not, uh, in any way a lawyer here, but I would guess that if we're not directing people to walk or be down there, our liability would be somewhat limited, is that fair?
Right, yeah, that, that would be a fair, fair curization. And so, yeah, just acquiring the property and the easement being there isn't gonna do anything to substantially increase any liability to township for anything that could happen there.
Do you have, uh, some pieces you could pull together on just sort of conceptually the liability of park areas, to answer some of Jack's questions?
Yes. Well, and I guess, just generally speaking of this, I, I mean, it would be then just township-owned property.
Right.
And they're just reserving a right for the easement, for purposes of what they have to do there for the drain, and so they're responsible for that. The rest of the liability would be on the township, so it's township-owned property, just like this is township-owned property. And the liability that would come along with that, depending on what the property's actually being used for, and who's invited there, uh, then the duty of care could, could change throughout that. But just purchasing it's not going to, uh, affect the, the liability of the township.
But if we do decide to take that next step and do some development of a trail, I think, I would assume there may be some more liability, because now we are directing people, and I think that's what Jack was asking about.
Yeah, that's exactly, and I, again, I'm certainly, I'm not an attorney, I did stay at the Hollywood Express one night, but, um, you know, I did try and read up on some easements, and, and.
Yeah.
I agree that if you're, if, if what you're doing actually becomes the primary use of it, then you assume a little bit more of the liability, i- if it's a shared agreement. So, uh, you know, I, I just think it's worth looking into.
But to Sheri's point, I think, if we had the property under Bath Township, the ability to put up fencing or other things, we would control that, more so than having to run through the red tape of the, the county.
Permission from the county, yeah.
You know, when like, this is the last thing on, you know, Phil's plate he wants to be dealing with. We could decide to put up a fence and, you know, have it there.
Easy, easy to do.
Quickly.
I think we should buy the property, for, offer him two thousand dollars, whatever.
Uh, you had your hand on it, I'm sorry, Brenda.
No, I was just wondering how are we gonna protect Mr. and Mrs. Teramy's property? Would be a future cost to put something, a fence or?
I think a fence or something along there is, because it's so close, that, that's one of my thoughts, is if, if I had a trail next to my farm, a railroad that was abandoned or whatever, and people bitched about that when there's a railroad that goes through and they abandon it, and it becomes a trail. Some sort of protection for his property from us seems very reasonable, and cost is not much.
Would that also mean, uh, the road, because half of that is his road, because it's a private road?
It would just be along that edge, I would think, where the trail would butt next to his property. Because it is very close, where we have to go between the dam and his property is like twenty feet, Mike, or about?
It's not a private road.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Um, and the literal property line goes down the center of the road. And in some of these that the township already owns, it specifically states a sixty-foot right-of-way from the center line, thirty feet on one side, thirty feet on the other.
That's legal.
Yeah, and that's legal.
I think if we were to move forward with a trail, we would do, we'd have to take all of the things possible to direct people where to go and where not to go. I think that would solve some of the problems they're having now, but it would commit us to sort of entering into the, the trail business.
It might fix some of the problems that they're having there now, with the land, private landowners and people stomping across their land.
Right.
And, what, this is where you park, there's a fence, this is where you walk. Does that make sense to you, to protect his land, too?
I, I have spoken with Mr. Teramy about, you know, putting a gate right in front of, you know, where you come across the legacy bridge, and put a gate there to direct people physically onto the, the easement to, uh, for them.
Little arrows.
It's, it's very, very easily solvable to the benefit of the homeowners.
So I think there's the trail conversation over here, which sort of looms ahead of us. And then I think there's this particular piece of property, the switching of, uh, ownership of the property with the easement that's in front of us now. They are intended to be together, but also don't have to be together. Uh, so getting the property now does not mean that we're investing in the trail long-term. But I do believe that it does send a message that we have some interest or intention in heading that direction to folks. So, I heard a bit of, uh, thinking we should offer an amount. Is that a, may not be a consensus, but do we feel like we've got enough energy around that? Would someone like to put that into a motion form? This isn't an item for action, is it?
No, no.
So you're just looking for some advice, rather than? All right. So, does someone wanna throw out an idea that we could spiritually agree with, but not necessarily vote on?
I think just trying to seek consensus, Mr. Supervisor, is that what you're looking for?
I, I think because it isn't an item for action.
Yeah, yeah.
Some idea of some guy, what we don't want is Karen to go out and represent us.
I make a motion that we take an idea of twenty, of a two thousand dollar offer for the, uh, property and let her discuss that with me.
But we're not gonna put it into a motion, because it's.
It's not an action.
It's not an action motion.
Does Commissioner Hans?
Direction.
Would you, what I heard is there are a lot of questions, so do you need Commissioner Hansus to come here before we move to that? Or do you, do you feel good about moving forward in a different way? I'm trying to decide if you have unanswered questions.
I think it does, but they're not for Phil.
Okay.
Right, they're, they're more about trail than they are about this particular piece of land.
I appreciate that you separated these two things out, because I think that's important. I think that'll help us move in a direction to get at least first steps out of the way, and so, um, yeah, I mean, I, I'm prepared, you know, to, um, to find some consensus on the purchase of the property, but, uh, again, it does tend to send a signal that we're gonna move forward with this. But until some of the other questions get answered, I'm not personally ready to move forward with it, so.
Yeah, this, this is on my list, depending on how much time we have this year to try to answer. It's sort of an odd timing to come up with an answer, because there might be seven new people sitting here in ten months from now who might have a different answer, so I'm hesitant to try to jump into like, let's solve the trail issue, only for that reason. Uh, but, but this is a, as I said, I think this is an issue that we, as a community, has let loom without some direct answers that should be there.
I don't see any way we can get hurt by ownership of the property when you're separating these things out, so.
So Sheri's suggestion was two thousand dollars, that seems.
I, I would, I would suggest that we say engineering and legal expenses, and not put a dollar amount, um.
We don't believe that they'd ever run up the.
No, I don't.
The tab on us.
No, I don't.
Well, wait a minute, we have shared counsel right here.
We could put a maximum.
Yeah, not to exceed, a, a price not to exceed.
Price not to exceed twenty-five.
Okay.
Do you think that's?
If, if, if it's going to exceed twenty-five, I will come back to you.
All right, is there consensus around that, without a vote? Anybody feel strongly against that? All right, do you feel like you have what you need?
I do.
All right, great. That brings us for actual items for action. Thirteen BA, second reading and adoption of zoning ordinance thirty-one point eighty-five, that's a health and wellness center. Uh, I don't know that we need Miles to come up unless there's specific questions, since he's introduced us, uh, to this in one meeting, and then he introduced it before the last vote, but happy to answer questions if anybody still has them. I'm thinking about efficiency less than trying to control the information.
Are we just talking about the first one, or both of them?
First.
First one, first.
Okay, no, I don't have any questions.
But I will say the exact same thing for the next one. All right, any, any need for our planner to join us on this thirteen BA? If not, is there a motion to move that, uh, second reading and adoption?
I'll make a motion to adopt the second reading and adoption of the zoning ordinance thirty-one eighty-five, health and wellness centers, as presented.
Thank you, Brenda, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any other discussion questions? This would be our final, uh, movement before this goes into effect. All right, we'll do a roll call vote on this.
Mr. Funes Plus?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Fettler-Chandler, yes.
Thank you, that moves us to items for action thirteen BB, second reading and adoption of zoning ordinance thirty-one point eight-six. This is the new update to private drives and roads. Again, I'll ask if there's questions, we'll invite Miles up, but if not, we will have him stay firm. You're up, sir.
Sorry. Mine is minor.
Okay.
Uh, you've got a table in here, and I saw it before, and I forgot to mention this at the last time, so I apologize. She's got a table of zoning districts for performance subdivisions, and it mentions some minimum lot areas, and is that, are those numbers in feet?
Yeah, it obviously is.
There's, there's no units in there, other than the, the percentage for maximum lot coverage. So that was my only question, is are they feet? Yards?
This one says feet.
Okay. Could we just add that?
Which page is that, Kate?
I don't, it doesn't have a page number.
Oh, because I'm looking at one that says like 12 feet, 18 feet, 22 feet.
It looks like this.
Okay, so that's?
We're looking at a bigger chart.
We're looking at a bigger one.
Oh, there it is.
It's between two and three.
That's about decibels.
It's before decibels. Two pages before the decibels.
That's in the other ordinance, right?
Is that in the first ordinance or the second one?
Is it in the first ordinance? Oh, well then never mind, I guess I missed the?
It's like, I don't remember seeing that one in the second one.
Never mind then, I missed my chance.
No, but I thi-
We can also have that fixed on that one before.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion that we label what, that's feet or whatever it is, it must be.
Sorry, I thought it was a private roads one.
Do you wanna amend the last motion then? To, uh, make that change?
No, I think it's just a labeling issue. I don't think. David, do you think that's out of place for us to add FT?
No, that's fine.
That doesn't change the?
Then no, I don't have any questions.
Sherry does though.
Um, I think it's simple. Uh, it's under the first part, definitions of private roads and drive-through sidewalks block. Plicability, and all are permitted except rural.
Yep.
Why is that, can I ask? I just don't understand.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, so that is to prevent a term in planning called urban sprawl. I don't know if you've heard that term, but basically this ordinance would allow for the greater proliferation of housing construction throughout the township. And in effort to keep the rural areas rural, uh, we amended it so that wouldn't be able to take place in that district.
So I couldn't put a drive-through part of my property and put a house back there?
If you're in the rural district, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I just got a, well, it's kind of a, maybe a dumb question. Why can't you put numbers on these pages?
We could, we could.
Ask a question, you would know where we're coming from. You probably know anything.
I think we could actually put numbers in the whole packet, right? I think that might help us overall.
Yeah.
Very important.
Because I think when we're at the planning commission meetings, if I recall, we always do number the pages. But when the clean copy goes, we remove them, not as to not renumber their packets.
Miles is saying he does it, right? But Karen doesn't.
No, and that's not. Our, our packets operate in a different manner, which is neither right or wrong in our packets.
No, I, I think that's good feedback. Other questions for Miles before we move this question?
Yeah, I got asked today, and I, I wasn't in on this, so I'm a little garbled, sorry. But the Webster Road Improvement, there's two separate things. If I understand it, one is down south of Drumheller and the other one is up north more. Sidewalks and, I really didn't understand the question that was coming at me, but they wanted me to ask you.
Does that have to do with this?
I think it might be that last topic that we're talking about.
Yeah, I think you're skipping ahead.
The Webster Road Fill Project, is that?
Well, it's not really, yeah, I'll put it in there, I'll put it in there.
That's that project.
It's a separate project, but?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind. Call you back later.
I don't think I'll be here for that.
Then, oh.
That's a Karen question.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
He's threatening to leave the whole building, so speak now? All right, I, uh, have shared with you all that I'm a no vote on this. I've explained that before. That has not changed, uh, living this.
Because, well.
Living this makes, vote no on this, so. Uh, if, with that said, is there folks that want to move this forward, uh, now would be the time to move that?
Why are you no, may I ask?
I think private roads are a bad, bad deal. I think it relies on an agreement of people at one time who won't exist in the future. And I think we're trying to solve, I think Miles has done a great job as a planning commission as well, of trying to put as much in here to smooth things out as possible. But 20 years from now, when none of these people exist in these land plots and around the road anymore, they're still gonna fight and they're gonna come up to, Karen will be gone in 20 years, but, you know, Karen 4.0 that we have and they'll want the township to solve the problem. But the planning commission has done everything they could in this to try to, to forego that. But I, I've shared, I live on a private road. It's a daily struggle with 80-ish people who, none of which existed in 1996 when that was put together. There's some corrections to those things in here, but it's, um, I think what is actually worse about it, Sherry, is it's like neighbor against neighbor, like in a very real way. Like, you know, I don't like you and I'm gonna park my car. It turns real petty and it just makes a community harder to live in.
So having no regulations obviates that?
No, we have strict regulations right now. You cannot, you cannot build a new private road in the township right now.
They're trying to loosen the restrictions.
And this is in response to a particular landowner who petitioned us, so the, the planning commission had to take some action and this is what they came up with. Go ahead.
But this ordinance would still not allow your current situation.
That's right.
Correct.
Yes.
However many, 12 is the max.
Yes, 12 is the, yeah.
Right, 12 is the maximum.
12.
And there, are there private roads currently, I mean, there are plenty of private roads around. Do they operate more smoothly than the one?
I thought you were trying to duck out of that question.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Um, yeah, there are a number of private roads in the township. They vary in shape and size and manner, from small dirt private roads that serve six households to, uh, larger private roads that serve many. Probably the largest would be the Meadows. A large portion of that is private and there's more than 80. I mean, there was hundreds. I mean, I think in the Meadows cat, um, situation, what they've largely been able to stave off kind of the drama that's plagued Meek Creek through hiring outside management company with very strict rules and financing that conducts it more professionally. I think your neighborhood has moved to a private management company model, which I'm in support of. However, to the point, um, yeah, uh, private roads can cause conflict. And we've tried to put measures in place, and I appreciate the positive words, obviously, and I appreciate the planning commission helping me think through this topic on how to put those measures in place to mitigate the issue. I'll just reiterate that I think there's externalities that can come from an ordinance like this. I think there's also, there could be some positives as well. The main positive is, um, it increases the opportunity to establish housing, which is a need. The negative, of course, is it could potentially create future conflict among neighbors. So as state, we try to stave that off. I'm trying to think. So to your question though, more specifically, um, we've seen some bad issues and we've seen, there's private roads that we've never hear, hear anything about, which to me means they're operating correctly. No news is good news, so.
Thanks, Miles.
Yeah.
Other questions for Miles? All right, if folks are interested in moving this forward, take a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of zoning ordinance number 31.86, private drives and roads.
Thank you, Jack. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Al. Any last comments about ordinance 3186? All right, we're ready for?
Tristan, your problem, um, there are problems on public roads too. So don't think that just because it's a private road, you don't have problems.
That's, that's fair. That's fair. Roll call vote?
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Funes Plus?
No. All right, passes six to one.
Mr. Supervisor, I know we're moving toward closure, but I could possibly have a con, personal convenience break before we move on.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We're gonna recess for three minutes?
Party break.
Judged by the speed at which I walk. We get the timer, Brenda.
Have her going off and he comes back.
We need one of those lights like congressmen have in their offices so that he can look up at the urinal and say, it's time to vote, it's time to vote.
Where do we share, like, stuff that happens at our other committee meetings? Do we have to ask, put that on the agenda?
Usually, but you could also share it in board member comments. If it's more formal, we can put it on, like Brenda added the function, it was the election committee.
Okay.
Uh, that can always be on.
Okay.
If you have something.
Gotcha.
Karen?
Yes, sir?
Is that, is that police and fire board still gonna meet Wednesday?
Uh, I think at this time there were some questions about if they could meet, so I think there should be a conversation between you and, um, Kristi Foley.
Okay, because I haven't?
If you don't mind giving her a call?
I have, yeah, I can call her.
Okay.
I haven't received anything through the mail on the agenda and that's why I would wonder.
I think there were some questions circulating today.
Okay.
The other thing, um, is depending on how formal the item is to share, it's also helpful to have the chairperson of the committee come and speak on behalf.
Okay.
I think that is helpful to protect us from sort of putting forward our opinion on the issues where there might be conflict. All right, let's, uh, recall this meeting to order. We are at item 14, new business. Items for introduction discussion, senior center recommendations. Uh, it's my understanding that the senior services advisory board has taken some formal action to recommend some things to us. As you know, when a committee puts into formal action a recommendation, it's supposed to come to us and we're supposed to act on that. So I think the superintendent has some information on that and some recommendations from her as well.
So there was, there was discussion at the last senior services advisory board meeting related to closing for inclement weather, as well as being a warming center at the senior center. Um, it has been my position that, um, due to the nature of, um, seniors and their age and doing some research, um, I maintain that we should continue to be closed if the Bath schools are closed for inclement weather because people in that age group tend to be, um, at risk of hypothermia, frostbite. Obviously falls if they're shoveling snow or walking on conditions that are not good for them, such as ice, um, as well as car accidents. And I, I know they're, um, adults, I know they can choose for themselves, but I do think it's important that if we're going to protect our children, that we also protect our seniors as well. So I maintain that the, the senior center should remain closed when Bath schools are closed for inclement weather.
Could you share what, the recommendation from the committee that they've asked us to take up?
So I believe the recommendation was that we not serve a meal that day, but that we still be open from nine to four.
Go ahead.
Um, I've been asked by the committee since I'm there with them and talked to all of them and they're very upset that not only were we closed when it's cold and nasty and the schools are closed, when this building is open and we have people coming here, that they should have a place to go. Not only that, that we were closed there for 10 days when we had the hottest weather and the worst possible pollution in U.S. history in Michigan for 10 days. And every single senior was upset. They had to stay home. Some of them don't have air conditioning. I know some people don't understand that that's a possibility, but some people at home have no air and they can't afford to keep their house warm enough in the winter. So to keep it open when the schools are closed is their recommendation. I was told, and I agree with this, we should have a subcommittee come and I would like Kate to be on there with me and pick some other people and bring a recommendation to the board of what we would like to do with the senior commi, senior center. When the schools close, what we should do and bring it to a vote. That's what the commit, that's what the people wanted in the committee.
Thanks, Sherry. Go ahead.
Um, my concern is the schools are closed, buses aren't running, roads are bad. I don't think that we should put our emergency services in peril possibly because we have seniors trying to get here to go to a center to have a meal when the roads are bad. So I believe what Karen is doing and that other superintendents did prior to this is the way it should be handled. If the schools are closed, we are closed at the senior center.
So, uh, just to clarity, uh, before we get to Brenda, it, I just want to make sure I understand. This is a operations issue and you as our operations director have made a call here.
Correct.
And the committee is saying we'd like to have a different call.
That's my understanding.
But you're maintaining your original decision.
I am, yes.
So what we're being asked to do is really overturn what you have laid out as the chief administrator.
That's my understanding.
To go with either what they're saying or some third option.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I understood that. Go ahead.
What are other centers in the area doing? Are they closing when the schools are closed?
That's one of the things a subcommittee can look at.
So, um, yes. St. John's School is closed.
Plankton Senior Center will be closed as well.
There's a whole list of them. Tri-County on Aging, pull up their Facebook page. They have a whole list of places that are closed. I mean, if Tri-County on Aging is saying, stay home, the roads are bad, stay home.
Is that because they closed on their own or they closed because St. John's School is closed? Like, what is the?
Yes, the senior center in St. John's did.
But the Tri-County office?
They closed because of the inclement weather.
On, but they made that?
And they have a whole list on them.
They made that call on their own. It isn't automatically triggered by some other entity making the call first.
Correct. But if you go to their Facebook page, they also list a whole bunch of other community centers in the Tri-County area that closed because of that.
What do we do, let's say it's over Christmas break?
Mm-hmm.
When the school's not in session and what do we do if there's bad weather? That happens on a day that we would be open, but there's just not school because there's not school, spring break, whatever.
So I haven't encountered that with this police chief, but with the prior police chief, we would talk during his morning commute and he would indicate to me how the, the roads were on his commute in, as well as he would talk to those that were on patrol and let me know what the conditions were like in this area so that I could make a, a judgment call with him as to keeping people safe, whether it be the senior center or people in the office as well.
And how do we feel about heat and smog? Is that same thing, we should close for that? We should be sure we're open for that?
We've got smog in that building too, the same as in their house.
Oh, no.
So, oh.
With air conditioning and no air conditioning would be the same?
You think air conditioning keeps it out?
Some.
No, I don't.
Does it keep it cooler?
It moves the air, and the air being moved, you bring your outside air in.
My biggest concern is, I, I've had some conversations with Karen about this. I've had some conversations with Karen about, Karen about this where we are not on the same page. But at the end of the day, I'm concerned that we would be micromanaging our staff if this is the level of decision-making we engage in. I, I agree, this is within our purview, but the purpose of hiring experts and having emergency folks on staff is so that our time is not spent doing these things. Uh, I think we set a bad precedent if a committee doesn't like what Karen says, that they come to us and we overturn her. Regardless of how I feel about school closings and senior center closings, I'm worried that we send a message to our committees, if you don't like what the boss says, bring it to us and we're gonna get into like some real minutia of issues across the township. If you can imagine all of our departments, all of our staff members that Karen's managing, if those decisions start to come to us because we've undermined her, I, I think we become bogged down and I think we really cripple her as a leader. So I think there's legitimate argument about who closes what and when. I am a little concerned that we set a bad precedent if we start micromanaging when our facilities are open. That's my two cents. Jack?
Yeah, I really, um, I will agree with that wholeheartedly because I've seen this happen in various other committees, not just this committee. It's similar to parent shopping. You don't like the answer one parent gives you to go to the other parent. And that, that's just a recipe for disaster. And I'm not willing to say, if Karen was so far off base with this stuff that we had that? If Karen was so far off base with this stuff that we had to act to, in a sense, tell that we're not really satisfied with that particular direction, it'd be one thing, but I'm, I'm just not a fan of trying to overall, she, she runs the operations of this township unless something's extraordinarily out of whack. I'm not a fan of trying to do that either, Ryan. I, I can't honestly understand, and I, I certainly appreciate the arguments coming from the Senior Services Advisory Board and the things that you bring to us from them, but for the life of me, I can't understand if the weather's bad, why in the hell anybody'd want to get in the car and drive someplace else? I, I, it just baffles me. I can't wrap my mind around that. You know, there are times when our refrigerator's empty and it's like, well, if the weather's bad, we're just going to have to tough it out a couple days, because I ain't driving to Myers in this weather. You know, it just makes no sense to me. But again, I'm not over there having those conversations.
Okay.
I, I, I agree with all that, as somebody who's always got my fingers crossed that I don't have to drive to work if the weather is bad. I understand that, certainly. But I think maybe also, there are certainly times when schools close because it's cold and the roads aren't bad, or schools close the night before because they thought it was going to get bad, and then it didn't hit our area. I mean, we've certainly seen all the possible scenarios play out. There was last Tuesday when it wasn't supposed to be bad, and it was really bad. So it's, it's gone in all directions. And I definitely agree with what you were saying, Ryan, about not undermining our staff. I think that that's important. But I also, at the same time, am a proponent of compromise, and the spirit of compromise, and entertaining maybe some, trying new things perhaps, or, or some, I don't want to say that it's like a My Way or the Highway type situation, because I don't think that that's really what it is. But is there somewhat of a, like, a chain of command, so to speak, that you sort of work your way up, like you contact the teacher, and then you contact the principal, and then so on, so on, so on? You know, that type of situation where some, some compromise can be reached along the way?
Yeah, I, I, I will answer on behalf of Karen for this. I visited the Senior Services Advisory Board, and I'll have some feedback about that after this particular conversation, but it's clear that the relationship between them and Karen has broken down perhaps uncorrectably. So I think there's an issue we have to deal with at that point, but in a technical sense, what I heard from the Senior Services Advisory Board is that they have gone to Karen, they don't like her answer. And so in this case, as Jack said, I think they're looking for a different answer. Not, not unreasonably, but I do think it gets us into this weird situation. If we think we know how to run the operations better, what do we need Karen for?
Right.
And maybe, maybe that's a call we want to make, that's not where I'm at, Karen, but I, you know, when we chose, and I mean we, like globally, not us seven, but when we chose this model of government, we, we gave to the superintendent these types of things, because we should be busy thinking and talking about things like, should we build a trail, and, you know, what are the liabilities, like the bigger governance issues? So I worry that we start to, to piece that, take that apart piece by piece. But you're, you're going down the same trail I went down in my conversation with Karen, so I, we're, I don't think we're actually all very far off.
Right, and I understand that this has been the policy for a long time. This is not a surprise. It might have been a surprise to some people, but it's been the policy for a long time. So there is that. I'm not usually a fan of micromanaging people, adults especially for their own investments. I mean, I guess that's sort of what government does, but I think that there's a separate way to address that then through us, is what you're saying.
Yeah, and, and to be fair, again, to the Senior Services Advisory Board and Karen, this is the second time they have done this, and we did it the first time. We decided to vote in a way that Karen had already ruled against, and so we've already undermined her once. And I don't, I'll, I'll speak for myself, I didn't realize it at the time, what we were doing, and then in hindsight, I realized we may have set a bad precedent. And then this comes up, and I think we continue, if they're not getting what they want from Karen, they're going to come to us. And again, to Jack's point, if Karen was not doing her job, or was, you know, not performing, or there were, like, actual changes that we needed to see in her as an employee, I think that's a, a related but side issue. But in her most recent review, that did not pair out. It seems like the board, for the most part, is happy with where she's at. So that's the, that's the weird pushin', Paul.
I raised, but Jack has something to say.
Go ahead, Sherri.
I just want to sort of amplify on one of the things you said, and, you know, in previous boards, when Karen's contract comes up, or I'll leave it out of Karen, when a superintendent's contract comes up, we decide of that list of all the things that we can put under their authorization, what they're going to do, and this board and the previous boards have done that. They've, they've individually said...
Well, it's like A through J or something like that.
Yeah, it's actually a state statute, the, the things that are granted to me in my authority.
Exactly, and so, you know, that, that's one of the things that was, was an oversight of the board to decide whether or not they want to allow the superintendent to take these functions. And that's been decided on numerous times, and I don't think there's any reason to change that, unless there's some huge... It would have been addressed in, in evaluations, employee and performance evaluations before this. So that's all I have to say.
I would offer, Sherri, that when we were scheduled to be closed, we, we did, as an organization, learn from that incident with the Canadian wildfires. I have talked with staff, and if someone calls and needs a warm place, we are certainly available to them and will help them. And if they need longer-term accommodations, we will also work with them to help them do that too. In the instance of an emergency, should there be a pileup on 69, should there be a massive power outage, we would mobilize in a different way, but I would be working most likely under the emergency plan with Supervisor Fuenz Bliss, or whoever the supervisor is at that time, along with the police chief and the fire chief, to mobilize resources, and it could even be Red Cross resources, to make sure that people are warm and fed and taken care of. So I, I don't want you to think anybody would be turned away. If someone called and said, I need a warm place, we would certainly welcome them here. And if, and if people started piling in these chairs, I would take them over to the senior center and do my best to make them some coffee. So it, it isn't that I won't, it's that the circumstances just haven't been right in this community, or we haven't been notified of a need.
Well, they were very upset when the heat and humidity was here, and we were closed for nine days. That was unfortunate. Those floor cleanings could have been postponed to reasonable weather, but that's what I heard from everybody, and I'm bringing to you, as a board.
Yeah, I mean, perhaps it's another chance, I like how Karen put that, that the organization has learned, perhaps, you know, if that's the case, when we schedule cleaning, they decide to cancel the cleaning at that moment.
Yeah, what's, what's the rush?
Right, but I think, you know, it's, I think those are the things that we learn by doing. Go ahead, Al, I'm sorry.
I was at the senior center years before the new rule was put in, and it was chaos on bad weather. Try and to let everybody know that there wasn't going to be open because the roads were unsafe.
Mm-hmm.
And it, I can't say this is perfect, the way we're doing it now, but it's a lot better than it used to be.
So the former superintendent chose bath schools, when bath schools were closed, we were closed. Of course, we represent four different school districts, but he chose bath, because whoever you were, you only had to turn on the TV and watch the scroll across the bottom to see bath schools are closed, senior centers closed. That also goes for our parks and recreation activities. On the days that, there are snow days for the school or inclement weather days, our parks and recreation activities are also canceled. So it's, it's not just seniors, it's, it's everyone in general, it's just a, a method that we've used to try to keep people safe.
In my conversations with the superintendent, I have suggested we look at alternate ways or additional ways of notification, whether that's a texting system like the school has, or phone call seems to be burdensome, emails, is there some way that we could also, in addition to, you know, the scrolling at the bottom of the screen, because these folks don't have kids, they're not getting, you know, I get the text message and the phone call at 5:30 in the morning, they're not getting that, is there additional ways that they could get that message? So I provided that suggestion to her. I, I feel about this similar to how I feel about the trail. I feel like there's this ongoing conversation that we have not, we've not fully had, in that, is the senior center an emergency center? Are we equipped? Are we ready? Do we want this to be a place to solve all of these problems? And I'm, I'm not saying yes or no to either of those, but it feels like the Senior Services Advisory Board is pushing us closer and closer to something that we have not been in the past, but none of us have really said, hey, is this who we want to be? Is this what we want to do? What do we need over there to be equipped for this? What is the staffing like? I think we fool ourselves to say, we can just put a volunteer over there and all the problems will be solved. I think if we really want to look at smog and smoke and heat and, like, that facility is not really equipped to solve all those problems. So it feels like we've got this hanging conversation, right? Like, do we want a trail? Do we not want a trail? Do we want the senior center to be this type of emergency facility or not? That probably we should have that. And that does feel like a board-level conversation, rather than, when are we open or when are we closed? What do we want the senior center to be? Are we a big enough community that that is a emergency functioning operational place, even when school is closed, or when it's cold, right? And we're not talking about actual emergencies when we have the emergency plan that we would, you know, the superintendent and the police chief and I would put into place. Like, that, that actually does have a plan, but these sort of intermediary emergencies, I guess I would call them, not necessarily real emergency, but, you know, we do have lonely folks who are sitting at home who want that engagement. Do we balance that with physical safety, right? Like, those are the questions that we have not had as a group, but it feels like the Senior Services Committee, and feel free to disagree with me, Sherri, if you do, is trying to get us to have that conversation, but we're doing it by chipping away at these other conversa...
It's reasonable.
Do we have bingo over here? Do we, you know, close when the school is closed? When actually, the conversation we need to have is, what do we want that place to be?
Well, it's a reasonable thought, that's from, I would say, the seniors too, and it's so important for them to have a place where they go, be it hot, cold, smoggy, or whatever. Offer more, I mean, a lot of these folks have paid taxes longer than a lot of us have been alive, and I think we need to, and that we're growing, that older population is growing. And I think it's our duty as a board to take care of them as much as we can. So perhaps expanding the senior center as much as we can reasonably, not double its size perhaps at this time, but use it to its maximum possibilities at this time, is what they were asking me to bring to you.
Yeah, I think your key words are, as much as we can. And I think we need to decide, what is the much as we can?
Right.
You know, we wanted to invest in that building to be all of these things, we, we could do it. It would cost us some more money and probably some more staff time, and that's not good or bad, it just is.
But a bit at a time, and, and...
But I think we need to...
Yep.
We need to understand that as a whole, and I think we need to decide, and then we'll be able to look the Senior Services Advisor Committee in the face and say, listen, folks, we're not on board at this point, it's, we need to move on. Or, we're going to do it, here's how we're going to phase it in, here's what it's going to cost, but I feel, it just feels a lot like this trail issue, where it's like, boy, we really don't want to, like, have the hard conversations, so we're going to dabble over here so we don't have to. And I think our job is to have the hard conversations on both of these issues, and there's probably a list Karen has of 10 other things that we've been punting the ball on that she'd like us to...
You are correct.
To decide or, you know, get off the pot, so to speak. Other thoughts on this? I didn't mean to hog that last...
No, I just would like to kind of share one last comment, and I'm going a little bit off, Al, he's been around long enough to see it. As you all know, I've been in this township since 1980, seen this, heard similar arguments. And your point is well-taken, that it never gets addressed. At times, I feel like I'm stuck in a Groundhog State causality loop that I could never get out of, because it goes over and over and over and over and over. And it's going to take really just addressing, what is the intention? Because I'm not sure we've defined what the intention is of that. Originally, and I remember this, because I was here before it really started turning into a senior center, it was to feed people in the township that couldn't afford to eat, had trouble, you know, with those types of things being fed. And it, it has grown, and I think we can say that we are making some adjustments, and we're trying to help, because why else? Why else would this township put close to $200,000 every year to make this successful? I think people start making claims that we're not really trying to help them, I think they're false. I think there's no way that you can justify those types of claims, with all the time and effort that staff and dollars that we put in to help grow this to different levels, I, I can't accept that. I think we'll continue to try to do a better job as we can, but the key is, like you said, Mr. Supervisor, at the level that we can do it. I guess that's my last soliloquy on this particular thing, but...
So pivoting to the other conversation, or the other thing I wanted to share with you, I was invited by the Senior Services Advisory Board to come to their meeting in December, and it was a lively meeting, and I heard lots of opinions, and some folks were agreeing with some of my thoughts, some folks were disagreeing, but it was very clear that the message I walked away with, like this question about the senior center, but for a, a broader sense of what is the role of Senior Services Advisory Board. There were several times that the board would say, we're going to do this, we want to do this, and when I said, I don't think it's appropriate for your committee to be doing that, they would say, what do you think is appropriate for our committee? And I think that's the right question. This is an advisory board to the board. Since I have been on the board this, this time or the last time, we have not gone through an exercise of telling the committees what we need from them and what we want from them. I understand that happened maybe in the late 2010s, or not 2010s, early 2000s, almost 2010, I don't know how to say the aughts, I guess, the late aughts. I understand that the committees were put through some type of chartering process, and I, I understand that that didn't work exactly well, the way that the superintendent at the time had intended it, but we've, we've barely changed any of the committees in decades, and the needs of the community are different. What do we want from the committees? What is their role? To me, that, I walked away from that conversation with that question. What is it you want us to be doing? We, we have these ideas, we pitch them to Karen, Karen says no, what the heck do you want us to be doing if it's not this? And I think they deserve an answer for that. If we all were going to be here longer, I'd say we should reengage in the conversation writ large about committees and the role that they play. I don't think we have time before the election, and I don't think it's appropriate for us to make a bunch of changes before potentially new people could come in. But I do think this lingering question from the Senior Services Advisory Board could be answered. What is it we want them to be doing? What is the expectation? You know, they're, they're doing fundraisers, and no other committee is doing fundraising, and, you know, they've got a treasurer on the board. Well, advisory boards probably shouldn't have a treasurer, but they've had one for, you know, decades. So what our expectations are is not clear to them, and I think they're getting miffed, and again, Sherri, step in if you think I'm misrepresenting, but that they come up with the ideas we think they're asking for, and then we tell them, no, no, no. So I would pitch this along, again, with the conversation about the center and the trail of things we need to solve in the near term and make some decisions on, so that these folks who meet for hours every month to talk about our senior services across the community knows what it is we want them to be spending time. I can't imagine how frustrating it is for them to meet here every month, to come up with ideas for them never to be implemented. That, you know, I heard very loudly from them that it feels like it is a waste of their time, and they want to be, they are community-minded and caring individuals, and they don't want to waste their time. So that's what I heard. Sherri, feel free to tell me if you heard, heard otherwise, but...
No, I, I agree.
I'd sort of put this in that bucket of things we probably need to address sooner rather than later, and that might mean having some tough conversations with each other, and then maybe some tough conversations with our friends who want the trail, our friends who want a larger senior center, our friends who are on the Senior Services Advisory Board. I don't mean to say that these will be easy conversations, but I think it's, we've been unfair to them and to the community to not have those hard conversations, and just be honest with them. And, you know, we turn over, at least every four years, on this board, we've turned over every six months in some way, but, you know, if, if folks want to wait us out and wait till the next board, that's what... But, you know, if, if folks want to wait us out and wait till the next board, that's within their power to do so. But I think in the short term, people deserve to know how we intend for them to spend their time. So that is, that is what I would propose to you, that we leave the decision that Karen has made as it stands. And we have the larger question about what we want the senior center to be and the larger question about what role we want the Senior Services Advisory Board to play. And I'm committed to working with Karen to get those topics on agendas spread out so we can have the time within a meeting to really wrestle with those issues. But only if you all are on board with wrestling with them. Because it, it can't be the Ryan Show, it can't be the Karen Show. And it, it really has to be the seven of us taking some leadership here. But, Al.
Yeah, question or a statement, I guess. Before we, when we first started about eight years ago, the, we had gone ahead and fed everybody for the same price. Then it got to the point, everybody was getting excited because we had people living in Langsberg and that their, they weren't paying tax towards the senior center. Haslett, Lansing, Perry, Owasso, all these places. And we had a real fight to keep things going for a while. And I think we should go back again and check every, when they pay for their meal, find out what township they live in or what township they're paying taxes in to let us know. At the time, we were having about sixty people come. And we had thirteen people that were usually at every meal that were from Bath. So the rest of them were outside Bath. And I'm sure knowing the people that are over there now, I, we're walking through Myers. They stop and talk to me. And most of them don't live in Bath. And that's just, it was brought to me today that a lot of people that go over there don't, aren't paying taxes towards Bath. So I, I think we should at least visit it. It's not a very fun thing to do because it wasn't fun last night.
In the budget that we just passed, we passed a flat rate, is that true?
I used a flat rate of four dollars to calculate anybody over the age of fifty-five for meal revenue. That's correct.
So there is not a differentiation?
No, that was eliminated.
We changed it when we got this last, right after COVID.
Okay, so.
Right after COVID, we dropped the five dollar meal from outside. I went and talked to Karen.
Yeah, it used to be like three and.
Three and a half and three.
Three and a half and five.
Yeah.
Yeah. And now it's just a flat four for everybody.
And that's what everybody felt like it should be, everybody should be paying the same.
So I think that's another good example of feedback we give to Karen and she can operationalize as she sees fit. Go ahead.
Was it open five days a week for meals before COVID? I, I fail to understand why we're not back to pre-COVID as we are in most places and most things. We're pre-COVID level and the senior center not. And that, that bothers everybody there. Why not? What's, what's the reason for that? What's the logic behind that?
I think Karen is the person who makes that call, so she's got to give the answer.
So prior to COVID, we were doing takeout meals from like Mexico to go. And you would have to put an order in by, let's say, Monday afternoon for Tuesday or Wednesday afternoon for Thursday. I will tell you, they were poorly attended. If we got five people, we were lucky, so.
Now we're up to what, sixty or seventy?
Yeah, but they weren't meals from the center. They were, they were meals that were brought in from outside for preparations. Fags Chicken, Tommy's Pizza, Mexico to Go. Um, and not cooked there. And it, and, and when we did cook there, they were also poorly attended. Mary would make food for what she would expect on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and she would barely get twenty people.
So we've changed a lot.
The Tuesday, Thursday attendance was very poor.
Are folks comfortable moving forward in the way that I've described? That we allow Karen to make the call on these operational issues, but we take on the bigger questions in the near future to be responsive to the community and to our boards?
And I have data that's been, that we've been collecting on attendance as well as five day a week attendance for Tuesdays and Thursdays for the last quarter. So I can bring data to the table if it helps you have those conversations and understand what's, what's been working and what hasn't been working.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. One of my frustrations has been the data that you provide and the data that Judy provides seems to be different. And maybe it's not, and I just don't understand that, but it makes it harder, I think, for us to. What I don't think we want to be in the business of is like, this person's data is better than that person.
So Judy's data comes from the same sheet that I use. Um, I use, it's, it's a, it's a account that is kept by the kitchen, the, the lead cook in the kitchen, Mary Hoard. And it's a total number of meals. It's a number of to goes and then the number of people eating in-house. And I will tell you from that data, from Mary, who's cooking the meals and serving the meals, to goes comprised forty percent of our meals and sixty percent are eaten in-house. So the amount of to goes has risen significantly. And that's, that's an after COVID data trend.
But there does seem to be disagreement, and this isn't for now, but for a, a later time when we have this conversation, about available space in the center. When I talk to staff, I hear there is space. When I talk to Judy, I hear people are sitting in their cars scarfing their meals down. So it's hard for me, and you know, I, it's hard for me to get in the middle of the day to the senior center to see it myself. So I just have to rely on.
I'll tell you, when she makes meatloaf, it's a packed house. I wouldn't be surprised. It, the, the capacity of the building is eighty-five. We automatically take five off because of staff. So that means we can seat eighty people. When she makes meatloaf, I'm sure they're packed. But that is not the case every day. The average amount of people eating indoors or eating at the center, excuse me, is approximately forty to forty-five people.
Which is about half capacity.
Correct.
Okay. If there are other pieces of data that you all want from the staff, I think that would be helpful as we think about having this larger conversation specifically about the center and then also about the Senior Services Advisory Board. Because I think there may be some other creative solutions we could come up with that neither, I won't say side, because we're all on the same side here, but neither group has come up with.
So I just want to, so for the two hundred thousand dollars we're spending, we're serving about sixty people in the community of thirteen thousand? Is that approximately right?
Fourteen thousand.
Are we up to fourteen thousand? Last season's, I thought it was thirteen something.
I, I would offer that that.
That's a lot of money.
It's an average, but yes, I would offer that that's correct.
I can tell you if you want to crunch the numbers, not just based upon meal costs. What, you know, you have a building, you have lights, you have heat, you have all that stuff. So unless bath math has gotten a hold of me in some odd way, I've run it a couple of times based on the numbers that I looked at and came in to talk to Karen about. And for each person that comes in there to eat a meal, it's costing us a hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Per year?
Per person.
For every time you go in there. Run it yourself, I'm being, I'm just telling.
To keep the building warm and cold.
Everything, meals, costs, everything.
Now, but that amount of money is divided by the number of people that come in. So the more people come in, it's cheaper per person, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is it the same sixty people or is it different people that just add up to about sixty every day?
I would, I would say we have our regulars intermingled with people that, that, you know, do different things at different centers. My grandpa, he goes to the Del High, but he goes, plays Uker and Delta and goes different places to do different things. So some people move around. The average for twenty twenty-three for twelve months is seventy-two people. Total meals, that's an average per day, with twenty-eight taking their meals to go and forty-four people eating in-house. So you have a seventy-two. Okay. Average per day.
That's helpful. That's the information that we'll want you to bring to us. Excuse me, when we talk about that. And I, I make a commitment to you all that we will find a time in the near future, whether it's a special meeting beforehand or some other time where we could really delve into that topic and understand it better. Because I think folks are waiting on us to take some leadership here. Is it all right if we move forward?
I do have one more question for you.
Then I will give you the last word, unless somebody else asked for the last word.
You was on the first, you was on the board when Judy, Paula put you on there in the Senior Advisory Committee.
Yes.
You was on there with my wife.
Yes.
What do you?
I remember it clearly.
Yes, she does too. The, do you, what do you see different between that period of time and this board? Because we have changed none of the rules.
Yeah. The biggest thing I see different is the staffing structure. Where we had a full-time leader who was empowered to make decisions and who only did that. That person ran the committee, just like, you know, Miles helps run Planning Commission. Without that, you've got staff members who aren't necessarily empowered to make decisions and to lead. And so I think the Senior Services Advisory Board is left with nobody to turn to but Karen. It's not really Karen's role, but if there's no one else, it's got to be Karen. So there's a vacuum there of, of like a partnership between the committee and the staff. Unfortunately, I think we've lost ten-ish coordinators in the past several years.
Eleven since I've been here since two thousand twelve.
So there's a breakdown there as well. But that is the biggest thing I see is that there was a staff member there who helped, who heard the feedback, who helped make some of the decisions, who was more involved in it than a person at Karen's level. But, but would tell the committee, no, we're not going to do that. I, I, thanks for the feedback, I'll take this, but I'm not going to take that. And the committee respected that line. I think the communication is broken down. And I've heard that frankly, straight from staff, that the staff have hurt feelings from the committee. And I heard it loud and clear from the committee when I was here, that they also have hurt feelings and feel like they're being mistreated. So that, without a solved of that problem, everything else becomes really, really heated.
Yeah, it does.
Thanks for that question. I hadn't thought about that until you asked it. All right. Are we okay to move on, folks? And let's go to our last topic for the night. This is fourteen B A Webster Road Fill Project. I know Sherri's going to have a question on this, but you want to tip us off?
I will. So this came relatively, fairly recently. I went to look for Miles and Miles has left the building. But it came in the last week or so. And the communication was between Mr. Darryl Kessler and the Road Commission. The Road Commission, working with, I believe, Keps, a firm, engineering firm, came up with a cost estimate of what this project would, it's, I think it's the last page in the packet, what this project would cost. Now, the ask is because of the development that's going to occur on Mr. Kessler's property. Let me see if I can do this again. Miles showed me a fantastic way to get this up here for people to see. So I think we all know that Norm Fasteners is going to, up on the screen, I'm kind of drawing a box with the, with the pointer, the mouse, is going to develop right here in this area. That area is very, very unlevel. So he is going to be, Mr. Kessler is going to be in the preparation of construction, leveling that ground and moving a great deal of matter, dirt, sand, whatever he finds in that area to another location. His offering is that we take it and help level out the area from Drumheller to approximately Somerset on Webster Road. As many of you know, there's a very weird hill and then a very weird dip. So the idea is to, before the Millen fill project this summer, is to try to flatten some of that out so there's not a significant hill or dip. And then it's more flattened out to the Somerset area. So the, so this was prepared again by the Road Commission, I believe in conjunction with Keps. The ask is, was by Mr. Kessler to see what the partners could do to help each other as I think there will be benefits to all of us, the township, the Road Commission and Mr. Kessler's property. And the Road Commission has committed to offering Mr. Kessler, I believe it's eighty-three. Sometimes it says eighty-two and some change and sometimes it says eighty-three. I think it's eighty-three thousand dollars. And Mr. Kessler contacted me, contacted me just prior to the end of last week, heading to Florida, wondering what the township would offer in conjunction of this project because we will see some benefit out of it as well. I would offer to you that I think paying the engineering fees might be something that we could do to offer Mr. Kessler in conjunction with this project. And it is up to this board whether you would like to offer him some type of lump sum payment. But at this time, I would recommend possibly paying for some professional services. Go ahead.
Whether we do or not, does that affect the project?
I don't know.
Okay.
I would have to have that conversation, based on your feedback, I would have to have that conversation with Mr. Kessler and the Road Commission.
The sidewalk is going to be put on that side of the road.
The east side of the road.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes. You've got a big water hole down there.
Correct.
You're going to have to fill.
Correct.
I noticed the hill on the edge, before you get to that, he has marked a bunch of trees that he's going to have to take out. So we have no sidewalk if he don't do this.
On the other side of the, on the east side of the road?
Yes.
So there would be.
It'd be underwater, the sidewalk part of that here.
So I think part of it is solving that project. And you'll see underneath, I think it's splatter sidewalk grades on the east side and less grade change coming down from the Somerset property. So that would be a benefit to us.
Yes.
If we were to proceed with this and, and, and make some type of offering. But you're correct, at this time, it is a marshy wetland down in there.
Always has been.
Always has been.
It isn't going to change.
Yeah, and the drain, and unfortunately, there's a drain that runs from Mr. Kessler's property under the road that just continues to feed that wetland. So it will never, theoretically, never flow away.
It's always been a culvert under there.
Yep. So there would be some lowering of that drain as well if he, if we lower, take some of the hill off. That drain, that culvert would need to be lowered as well.
Yeah.
Sherri, did you want me to ask your question?
Well, it's not really related to that. It was when, when the, I was asked when the Webster Road up by Clark Road is working, is that?
So that'll be this summer.
This summer, okay.
Okay, there'll be a Millen fill, but there's safe routes to school.
It's part of that.
That's part of that. And then this TAP grant is part of this as well.
Okay.
We got additional money from the state to put in sidewalk near Somerset.
And this would happen right before that other project starts.
As, as the Norm Kessler. No, Norm Fastner, Norm Fastner project kicks off, he would be removing dirt at that time. And yes, it would precede the work being done, the Millen fill work being done on, on Webster Road. So it's kind of spring, summer, but it would be Drumheller South. So Drumheller towards Somerset and the highway.
If I recall from the memo, it was like a May-June for this piece and then June beyond for the rest of the piece.
Yes.
Is Webster going to stay open somehow or not during all this?
So we are trying very hard with the Road Commission and, and Mr. Kessler and the groups that are involved so that we can have a communication plan to help people get to the highway, get to work. But it's, it may be difficult for a few weeks, but we, we are committed to the messaging and helping people get the information they need so they can get to work and, and wherever they need to be. It's going to be hard.
Hello, this is the Webster Road Complaint Line.
Call the Road Commission. Would you like to staff that?
No.
Bring my tractor and you can go across country.
It is going to be a challenge. My concern is predominantly emergency rescue vehicles, police and fire being able to get in and out. I think for the general public, going to do it and getting on the highway if you're going that way or potentially going the other way and getting on. or potentially going the other way and getting on Marsh, Marsh Road or Link- I think it will be, we asked that question, that will help.
That would help a lot, yeah.
So really helping people kind of redirect.
That might, that might be maybe necessary, because that would, that would allow emergency vehicles to come down Peacock.
Yep. So it's a lot of preparation, but we're, we're working diligently to make sure that that falls into place.
So your recommendation to us was engineering fees? Do you have any-
Engineering fees, I-